Me used to always be at five and then we had to change it to four thirty for somebody else's schedule. Back and forth, we used to be on Tuesdays, we used to be on Wednesdays, now it's Thursday.
Yeah.
It's not a problem.
I'm thinking about it. Yeah, I mean, that was my plan, but my TV paid down for lunch.
Uh huh.
The day, yesterday.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So I'll go up to see the other guy.
Yeah. They call him Dogger. Because he looks like Coach.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you're all nice.
Yeah, yeah, they're all real nice.
They made some chili, they made some chili the other day.
Oh, yeah.
It was, I didn't even know it was good. I said, I'm gonna take a dollar. You know, what's she get? Yeah, I think that's the president.
Uh huh.
That was nice, what they did.
Yeah.
We, we, we had them do with the, by the B B.
Uh huh.
They re-painted the whole ones.
Wow.
Yes.
That's good.
I thought that was my car.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, no, I sent that to you.
Oh, okay.
I put that in one of your, that's for Scott.
Oh, okay.
So I said, I made sure, I'd offer it, off my phone, and I made sure everybody, I made them one, I gave them counseling and everything. Just to look at it, see what you think.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing that we could do overnight.
I saw possibly one, yeah.
No, not me. Lee said, he was a creep, but he said, Lee said that shit.
Yeah.
He said, one of these shit.
Right, right.
He said, if we do that.
Steve is not, he had shoulder surgery.
I talked to him again today about it.
Two weeks ago.
I told him I gave him.
And I guess on first therapy, he would say, he said he is hurting.
I put it forward. I should've said, from Vince, but I.
That's all right, yeah, that's all right. Yesterday, you know.
Yep.
God, Ty, he's so nice, you know me.
Oh, yeah. Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to, I, I talked to him, I think after you did, because I wanted to keep him in the loop, and he had already talked to you, so that was good.
Yeah, those guys are.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming to this evening's Uniontown City Council meeting at four thirty P M, February third, twenty twenty-two. We'll call.
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Vakalki? Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gerke?
Here.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any comments on agenda items only? Yes, state your name and your address and go to the podium if you would please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Traut, and I live in the city of Uniontown. I wanted to make a brief comment about agenda item number twenty-two regarding changing the meeting time from four thirty to five. I wanted to speak briefly to this because I mentioned this in November during the public comment period, and I thank Councilman Billy for bringing this to an agenda item. As you consider this vote, I just wanted to share my own experience as to why I support this. As someone who cares about this city and wants Uniontown to be a better, stronger city, I'm interested in coming here to better understand how the city is running, learn more about the challenges we face as a city, to connect with our leaders and other citizens, and to reflect on what I can do to create positive change. Four o'clock is, or sometimes four, sometimes four thirty, is very difficult for me to get here. My husband has to take off work to watch our kids so I can attend. While I don't want to speak for everyone, I would assume that most people work until five o'clock. Considering council meets on a monthly basis, it seems reasonable that the start time of the meeting should accommodate as many citizens as possible. So while I hope that you all vote yes for the change to five o'clock, I still feel a slightly later time should still be considered for a vote in the future, such as five thirty to six, or six o'clock. We can't grow as a city if we don't have engaged citizens. A more engaged community is a stronger community. Part of being an engaged citizen is attending monthly meetings. I again thank the city, W M B S, and participating sponsors for streaming the meetings. It is a valuable service, but a video is not a replacement for attending in person. Good conversations can't be had when no one is here. And while I'm thrilled there's large attendance tonight, that is not always the case. I've been here many times as the only one or one of the few citizens in attendance. My hope is that a later time enables other community members to get more involved on a regular basis. If you vote to change the meeting time to five, I would like to thank you in advance for this important decision. This is progress toward a more appropriate time accessible to the public. If you vote no to changing the meeting time, I am requesting some transparency as to why. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. John?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to address agenda item, item thirty-seven, approved budget of thirty-seven fifty for the Sheepskin Trail fundraising event. That money is requested of coming out of the money given to us by the railroad to exhume the tracks in an effort to take that money and raise money for an event on a multiplier of the thirty-seven fifty we're requesting. The purpose of this event, again, we talked about it last month, is to raise funds for the construction of the Sheepskin Trail, which I think we would all agree is a vital part of the progression of our city economically and from a health and wellness standpoint, as well as many other benefits. I would also like, I would greatly appreciate Mayor and Council's support in approving that budget. Also, item number thirty-eight, approved rental of portable lights for Bailey Park for the last two weeks of the baseball season. As we're all aware, Bailey Park is the home to Uniontown baseball and softball, and for two years, they have been without lights. And while it may seem insignificant to some for a high school kid playing some of his last games or some of her last games of their high school careers, it is an important event to have those games under the lights, and we do ask that that approval not exceed a certain limit. And we do also want to reach out to the school district and the booster organization to see if they would be willing to chip in as well. So the total cost of those lights, we don't know what that would be, but again, it's just portable lights, two weeks of the season, to provide that atmosphere. And again, two years without lights on the Bailey Park baseball field is way too long. And some of these things are out of our control, but we can also do what we can to ensure that we are providing that experience for these youth and these high school student athletes. Again, we would appreciate your support in those votes, and I will be back up if that's okay to, any questions before I depart? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only? Move on the monthly report of the treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor and Council, attached is the monthly collection that was received in the treasurer's office that has been documented in QuickBooks and also deposited in the city accounts, which you will also see the ending balance for the month of those accounts. All the accounts that I have access to have been reconciled for the month ending except for payroll, in which my office hasn't received the documentation since April as indicated to you in previous reports. If you read the reports, which I had sent to you by email for you to review prior to the meeting, you will see that QuickBooks shows a discrepancy. However, the general account in the United Bank always has a four hundred thousand threshold with the, when that count was established. In twenty nineteen, the city turned over to the county four hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents that was uncollected for taxes. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, the city turned over to the county four hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents that was uncollected. And this year, we turned over three hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-fourth cents. That gives us that we actually collected a hundred and thirteen thousand more than we did the previous year. In twenty twenty, we had problems with our system, and in twenty twenty-one, we had some of the same issues. However, we worked through the chaos and confusion in spite of the odds. This year, I stand before you requesting, again, that we look at the treasurer office having a thousand dollars to get the adequate solution for the treasurer's office. Many of you are not aware that the county uses R B A to handle their data management, and in turn, the information is readily available for distribution. Currently, we have to wait until the county assessment office sends us changes, and this past year, our office did not receive some of the appropriate changes. Mayor Gerke, you can attest to this, because a parcel that you have purchased was missed. Even though you were not upset about it, I believe it could have been avoided with the R B A system because it has direct access with the changes that come from the county. You may or not, you may or may not remember that even the commissioners, the CDs and Dunn, gave a highly recommended letters to us last year in support of the city moving forward with R B A. Therefore, the change is affordable and more efficient. However, to calm the waters, I am not opposed to use both systems, R B A and RAC. This will help those who are opposed of the change to see both reports and see the difference of the quality of using R B A in the future. My office receives many calls during the tax season asking if we accept credit cards. I have to tell them no. With the R B A system, this could possibly happen sooner than later. I hope that if you have any questions, that you would feel free to reach out to me so that we can discuss it further, so that we can continue to move the city in one accord. Thanks and God bless. Any questions?
Not a question, but I would like to comment on a paragraph in this report that you have that actually does deal with the office. And RAC, just, just to explain, R B A is the company that, that the county uses for, for our data. RAC is a system that is used by all of the tax collectors in the county. And the treasurer is correct that there are a few people in the county that use the R B A system and that is all affiliated with county administration of the, of those, of that program. The changes that are made, so when we, it's all, it all comes down to time base and, and a time window of when these bills get updated. So you'll have the spring updated bills, we just received those bills, and they're ready for distribution of all the tax collectors right now. So those bills, that, that information gets sent out in the spring, or, I'm sorry, in January. Those bills get printed in March, and for distribution in March. Any changes that are made, after that, are additional charges. And the, my office will make a new report that goes out to all municipalities for all the changes, and those changes have to be manually updated by those tax collectors. Having the R B A system, I don't believe that it will do that. All of the tax collectors use this RAC system, and as long as all the licensing fees are updated and the maintenance fees are paid, the, the program runs appropriately. The situation with Mr. Gerke, as she is, that the treasurer is alluding to, is that there was changes made at the turn of the year, right, before the turn of the year. Our office runs in a delay, and this is just a natural delay, historical delay on deeds, the way they take the process of moving through the system. So by the time we make those changes, tax bills could be printed, and that is a possibility. So those changes are additional charges, all the tax collectors get those additional charges to make manual adjustments into their books. How we process that in, in our office, in the spring, when we update and certify our tax roll, that is all the new books that are printed for the, and all the tax collectors pick those books up. Excuse me, so what happens is that we make those changes manually in our office in our tax books, we put stickers for additional charges. I was brought to attention by the, by the sellers of a property that the information wasn't changed, and indeed, it was changed two times in our system, and I took a copy of the tax book and, you know, came down and, you know, wanted to see if there was any assistance that we can have, you know, to try to speed up that process. And at that moment, it, it, you know, I don't know if the changes are being made manually, but that is the process, and that's the process throughout the county. And I, I'm not real sure of that R B A, and then I think maybe later, we can have somebody speak that there actually is somebody in here, former in the office, that might be able to, if I'm wrong, speak, you know, and help, help put some clarification to that. But I would just, I like to say I appreciate getting the, the report a little earlier this time, I wasn't able to last month, have time to, to go down through. And, and I understand that all we're doing up here with this is just voting on to receive it, but I also think that we should all have enough time to look through it to see exactly what we're voting to receive on, so thank you. And if, if, if we could get the report earlier, that would, that would help me out at least too, so I would appreciate that, if, you know. I could forward my email address, and you can send a P F file or however that would be convenient for you, that would be good for me too. Thank you. I'll be voting yes on receipt of, of the report. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Billy, you were not on council when we had some issues with RAC, and this year, we're going to have some additional issues. I just got off the phone with them today, we may not even have our tickets, and they have to be in the mail by March first, and we may not have them. So there's a process of, and I'm not sure if you're aware in your office how RAC works with other municipalities, but with R B A, because they get the information and print the tickets, we would already have that information ready to go. So it wouldn't be a burden on the taxpayers getting their information late. And then you got to realize, with the municipal code, as far as the tax collection, the city could be fined five thousand dollars if we do not have them out in the mail on time. And so we try to prevent that.
So how, if I may, how, how do you receive the spring tax information?
Well, the spring tax information for us, it comes from, it, it sends from the county to R B A, then R B A has to send a disc over to RAC, because RAC has not just our municipalities, but he has over three hundred and fifty across the state, then he has to upload the information. Last year, we got it a week prior to it happening to go in the mail, because he didn't get it. The information he got was, the school mixed together. The school raised their taxes, but the city didn't, so our tickets had to be reprinted. So that puts us up. With R B A, soon they get the changes, they can have the tickets to us in a week. But if it has to go to RAC, he has to upload it into a computer system, he has to change their formulas to make it work for the city of Uniontown, because we accept four payments.
I'm, I'm interested in looking into it with you.
Yep, definitely. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had one question.
Yes.
Our, our council here provided you with check readers, and I'm under the impression you're not using those check readers?
No, sorry. And the reason why I'm not using the check readers is because a lot of my checks come in with the wrong information, wrong amounts, not signed, since it spends more time for me to do that, sort of send it into the bank, the bank helps me verify and correct those errors.
Wouldn't a check reader do that for you?
No. We try, it won't work for us. We have too many problems, and if a, if a payment comes in and we think it's a full payment and it's only a partial payment, we have to back all that information out, get the copy back from the bank. If it goes to the bank, we can work with the bank to get that information, and so it's not an error, it's easily defined through the bank system.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. That's all I have.
Thank you, Anthony.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the report of the treasurer for the month of January twenty twenty-two, be in the same, is hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the minutes of the January third, twenty twenty-two reorganization meeting, and the January three, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting, be in the same, is hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown, council hereby directs the director of accounts and finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the city of Uniontown for January twenty twenty-two invoices. In the general fund, one hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Sewer fund, one hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Recreation, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Highway, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Recycling, three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Off-street, six thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Mr. Billy?
If I may, before we, before we vote, this packet represents just under three hundred thousand dollars of unpaid bills that the city needs to take care of. And I, I want to stress, going through this year, that we really need, need to take the aggressive steps to hold the line and hold all of our department lines, really watch the, the spending that we're doing, really watch the overtime, and I think this is something that we can address through shift differentials, and so it's something that I would like to look, work more individually as we go through, and we really start to see what, where, where our aggressive spending is. And this also, later, as we get into the meeting, this also kind of ties into something that we get when we go down further in the meeting. But just to give an overview, you know, it, we're getting it to the point where we're just now going to start collecting, so we're relying on the carryover balance that we had. Last year's spending, we really need to get a control so we don't start out and go the same way that we did last year. That I'm going to be really aggressive on, and when we start getting into the middle of the year, we start talking budget time, really looking for all the department heads to really come up with some creative ways that we can really try to trim this, this budget. You know, we have a, and, and this is something that everyone will get, you know, used to hearing, is, is me talk about a shrinking tax base and the overall housing stock that we have in the city. And when the operating costs and, and of doing business goes up, if, if we are not able to increase the housing stock and get creative in different areas and control spending, that all has to come back on the taxpayers. So, you know, we all have to do our job and, and really try to hone in, in the areas we can, is, you know, excessive spending in utilities. I'm looking at that right now. Some of the areas that we have budgeted for, some of our utilities, and just looking through the first month, and then we go, these are the, the hard months where we're going to be using a lot of that, and we're tuning up in certain areas where we could have a quick fix. Yes. Thank you. Sorry for being long with you.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to approve changing the city council meeting time from four thirty P M to five P M. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown that Robert Semolo be reappointed to the Greater Uniontown Joint Sewage Authority Board for a five-year term to begin January one, twenty twenty-two, and to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for a new police civil service eligibility test for the position of patrolman. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize police up bidding for new twenty twenty-two Ford Interceptor from R T Designs thirty-eight at a cost of six thousand five hundred dollars. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the transfer of a two thousand nine Chevy Impala, VIN one one two four zero eight oh, from the Uniontown Police Department to the Uniontown Fire Department. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Corporal Michael Bitner from the Uniontown Police Department effective January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize payment of compensated absences to Michael Bitner as follows. One vacation day, thirty-nine sick days, seven personal days, for a total of three hundred and seventy-six hours at twenty-nine ninety-seven per hour, for a total payment of eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Ford Interceptor S U V for use in the city of Uniontown Police Department from Laurel Auto Group for a cost of thirty-four thousand fifty-five dollars. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Chief DeWitt, this is to replace a vehicle, is that correct?
That's correct, sir. One of our vehicles we have that's in use every single day, the head gasket's going out of it once we do the two thousand dollar fix, and we don't want to be serviceable for police purposes, meaning we can't use it for pursuits and general controls. Essentially, what we do with the two thousand dollar fix for police use, we would essentially be spending two grand if we can to revisit this again in about nine months. You will see here later on, that vehicle that I'm talking about, that's the one we transfer to the fire department, that fix will have a longer-term service for them for this vehicle, and allow them to have carryover before, start on, have a vehicle that responds to and come all the police on, on duty, allowing them to undertake the command of fires. So yes, this vehicle is replacing a vehicle in our fleet, and we will cycle the vehicles that we have to the appropriate officers, so we can do more fleet maintenance, which allows our vehicle, allows our vehicle to last longer.
Thank you.
Let's go.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize police up bidding for new twenty twenty-two Ford Interceptor from R T Designs thirty-eight at a cost of six thousand five hundred dollars. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the transfer of a two thousand nine Chevy Impala, VIN one one two four zero eight oh, from the Uniontown Police Department to the Uniontown Fire Department. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Corporal Michael Bitner from the Uniontown Police Department effective January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize payment of compensated absences to Michael Bitner as follows. One vacation day, thirty-nine sick days, seven personal days, for a total of three hundred and seventy-six hours at twenty-nine ninety-seven per hour, for a total payment of eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Patrolman Nicholas Ireland from the Uniontown Police Department effective January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to ratify amending section Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify amending Section 3.5 General Qualifications of the Police Civil Service Rules and Regulations as Presented effective January 24, 2022, and to ratify amending Section 3.11 Physical Agility Testing of the Civil Service Rules and Regulations as Presented effective January 24, 2022, and to ratify amending Section 4.1 Promotions of the Police Civil Service Rules and Regulations as Presented effective January 24, 2022. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for a new police civil service eligibility test for the position of patrolman. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize active and retired City of Uniontown police officers to purchase the forty caliber Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P that have rotated out of service for one hundred and twenty-five dollars. The transfer cost shall be paid by the purchasing individual to Ross Brothers. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Parking Enforcement Officer Joseph Kozlowski effective January 21, 2022. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of street sweeper parts from Old Dominion Brush for six thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into terms of engagement with Beer Ring Company Certified Public Accountants with the City of Uniontown to provide accounting assistance in adjusting the book of accounts with the objective to be able to prepare a working trial balance from which financial statements can be prepared for year end 12/31/21. Their staff rates range from fifty-five to one hundred and sixty-five per hour with the majority of services provided will be at a rate of sixty-five to ninety-five dollars per hour at an estimated sixty to seventy hours of time. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve a three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-dollar budget for the City of Uniontown Sheepskin Trail fundraising event to be held February 22, 2022 at the Ivory Ballroom. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the rental affordable lights to provide lighting for Bailey Park during the last two weeks of Uniontown's baseball season, not to exceed one thousand dollars. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the Director of Community Development to apply for the statewide local share account program. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the Director of Community Development to apply for Community Recreation and Conservation Planning Funding Grant DCNR. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the Director of Community Development to apply for the Park Rehabilitation and Development Funding Grant DCNR. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the Director of Community Development to apply for Land Acquisition and Conservation Funding Grant DCNR. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to direct and require the Treasurer's Office to deposit cash sewage payments from August 3, 2021 to the present as follows. One, two representatives of the administrative offices will count in the presence of each other and jointly sign written certifications of the total cash payment amount held for each day of the fore-said period. Two, a representative of the administrative offices will take those cash payments to the Treasurer's Office before 10:00 AM. Three, a representative of the Treasurer's Office and the representative of the administrative offices will count in the presence of each other and jointly sign written certifications of the total cash payment amount for each day of the fore-said period. Four, the Treasurer's Office shall document in its records the total cash payment amount for each day, excuse me, of the fore-said period in accordance with its procedures. Five, the Treasurer's Office shall complete a separate deposit slip for the total cash payment amount for each day, which deposit slip shall be limited to the total cash payment amount for each individual day, shall list the full amount of cash to be deposited and therefore shall exclude any check deposits. Six, the Treasurer's Office shall provide a copy of such deposit slips to the City Controller and the administrative offices on the following day. Seven, the Treasurer's Office shall deposit the total cash payment amount received from the administrative offices into the city sewage account at First National Bank on the same day that such total cash payment amount is received from the administrative offices. And eight, the Treasurer's Office shall obtain a deposit receipt for each deposit and provide a copy of such deposit receipt to the City Controller and the administrative offices on the day following the deposit. Excuse me, Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to amend the city's budget to increase revenue line item 355.002 of the Highway Fund in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-three cents to reflect retained funds from the prior year, calendar year, and to increase expenditure item 438740, major equipment of the Highway Fund in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the purchase down payment of a street sweeper. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Before we go, I'm sorry, I wanted to speak on this real quick. This is something that, an example that I was talking about earlier of trying to hold the line, this Highway Fund, and yet this is a good move. I think that we can use this allocation for better use later in the year. We are going to be moving forward with the project with the home decent, with ripping the tracks up and paving, and I believe that the hundred thousand dollars could be put at a better use to offset some of these allowed expenditures. I'm not against the purchase of a sweeper. We rack up bills, every couple of months, we rack up tens, thousands of dollars every four or five months or so. I just think that allocating that much money at one time to go directly for the one piece of equipment when we can down the road use that, those funds to offset, I think that would be in better line. I, again, not that I don't support getting the piece of equipment, I just feel that we can better work that into next year's budget in our capital outline and use that hundred thousand dollars to offset. And, you know, and I, again, I'd like to thank the office, the clerk's office, for putting all this together and doing all the hard work that it takes to put all this work With that said, you know, I really feel that we can use this for funds offsetting some of the expenditures later in the year, allowed expenses through the Highway Fund.
Is your vote still the same? Mr. Winfrey, I took your vote first.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Shuhon?
I'm in like agreement with Councilman Billy. We just okayed six thousand dollars, six thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents to purchase parts for the one we have now, so I'm going to have to vote no.
And Mr. Billy?
No.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to introduce Bill Number 1757, Proposed Ordinance Number 1736, City of Uniontown Pension, Police Pension Plan, and Ordinance of the City of Uniontown Relative to the Establishment and Maintenance of Police Employees Pension, Annuity, Insurance, and Benefit Fund or Funds, amending ordinances containing certain provisions of the pension plan or program applicable to the police employees of said city, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of City Council on March 3, 2022. A full and complete copy of the text of said proposed ordinance number 1736 is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to introduce Bill Number 1758, Proposed Ordinance Number 1737, City of Uniontown Fireman's Pension Plan, and an ordinance of the City of Uniontown Relative to the Establishment and Maintenance of Fireman's Pension, Annuity, Insurance, and Benefit Fund or Funds, amending ordinances containing certain provisions of the pension plan or program applicable to the firemen employees of said city, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of City Council on March 3, 2022. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that Arnell Farmer is hereby appointed a full-time police officer after successfully completing a six-month probationary period for the City of Uniontown effective February 9, 2022. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Before we get to our monthly reports, I'd just like to inform everyone here and watching online that we do have some board seats available on different boards that are, that you could serve on in the city. So if you have any interest of serving on any boards, contact myself or the administration office and we can say what positions are available and how you can apply for those jobs. Okay? Thank you very much. Move on to monthly reports. Uniontown CO officer, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening. Month of January with the snow and the ice, you wouldn't think that would hold me back a little bit, but it's kind of hard to see the garbage on the ground with there's six inches of snow on top of it. We went into January with 28 cases from last year, logged in seven new cases, closed So moving into, into next month, I have 28 cases. Little by little, we're getting through the backlog, which is kind of making me happy. In addition to working through the new cases and the backlog of cases, every taxpayer in the City of Uniontown will get a letter with their taxes, and I have to thank Aunt Monette Hodge, Treasurer Hodge, for helping with this project. She and her staff are stuffing the envelopes. I wrote a letter basically giving everybody their expectations for summer. I'm done chasing garbage. I'm done telling people to cut their grass. I'm done telling people to get garbage cans. I'm going to be real blunt about it. I mean, you must be stupid if you think the grass can be this high, but no one ever told anybody their expectations, so now you're getting them. We're going to move from a situation of giving people warnings and begging and pleading and asking to just giving them a fine. That's just the way it's going to go. So everybody should get in their taxes a letter of their expectations that will deal with garbage and grass and junk cars. Again, people think they can have four and five inoperable vehicles in their property? No, you can't. So we're shifting gears. I've spent a year and a half with warnings. We're done with that. Additionally, in January, redevelopment authority with the help of myself and Mark Raifel acquired eight properties from the city. Two of those properties are scheduled for demolition as soon as the funds and all the paperwork can be done, the funds are in place, we just have to get through the paperwork. Forty-three total properties identified when I did a survey last year of properties that needed to be demoed. As someone spoke earlier, I think it was Councilman Billy, we got a shift from dilapidated buildings, vacant properties, high grass, to well-maintained properties, and if they're not well-maintained and are demoed, we've got to put property structures back on. The only way we're going to keep our tax base is to do that. You can't, you can't run a city on dilapidated buildings and a deteriorating tax base. I didn't realize, at the end of the year, I went through and looked at my list of people I'd been after to tear down their buildings, and three of them were demoed without the city spending a penny. They were demoed actually, and one was repaired, and I checked, they did have building permits through K-2, so they did it right. Because I know, you know, K-2 goes out and inspects and makes sure it's done right. So we've actually flipped three properties that were on the list. One's actually in good repair, and the other two are demoed. And I guess lastly, snow and ice on sidewalks. Again, kind of like the grass, I don't like to call people names, but you must be stupid if you think you can not clean your walks. It's a liability to you, not to the city. Sidewalks are the responsibility of the property, not the city. I don't know what to tell you. If you have an issue with sidewalk, snow and ice, and you're unable to remove it, but it is your responsibility. For example, any questions? From any of you?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Matt.
Uniontown Fire Department, Mr. Winfrey?
I'd like to thank Chief Khan for accepting me down to the firehouse. It's been enlightening, you know, to meet all the different firemen. I still have to meet two more. I've met seven, I'll deny paid firemen, but it's been, it's been good so far. I'd like to just read about the incidents, and fire-related incidents, eight total with three being buildings on fire, three trash fires, two torch burns but no ignition. Rescue-related incidents, thirty-one total with eighteen being vehicle collisions, five extrications of injured ill persons from a building, one vehicle accident with entrapment, and one person struck, stuck in an elevator. Utility-related incidents, five total with four being gas leaks and one power line down. Public service details, seventeen total with four being persons in distress, eight locked outs, one water break, one animal rescue, two miscellaneouses, and one assist with the City Police Department. Our hazardous condition incidents, three total with two being smoke scares and one hazardous material release. False alarms, twenty total, smoke detectors of fire alarm activations. And special incident types, three total, these being fire drills or other fire prevention activities. Total eighty-seven for January. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. Chief Khan?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the chance to give a report this evening. A few things to add in addition to our incidents. Always like to talk about the training that we're conducting down at the fire station. Had a good bit of man-hours this month, actually, training either conducted or taken by personnel, two hundred and thirty-four man-hours among sixteen personnel. That's just this month, so pretty impressive. I'd like to recognize a couple of accomplishments. One of our newer volunteer members has completed all four modules of the Pennsylvania Entry Level Program, also known as the Essentials Program, along with the Hazardous Materials Awareness, Incident Command System, National Incident Management System, and these are all part of the program. That's a total of one hundred and sixty-eight hours. It's a big commitment and it's a really good accomplishment. Right now, we have two other new members that have completed their first two modules plus the Hazardous Materials Module. They'll be moving into three and four pretty soon. As far as our on-duty staff, we, once the weather breaks, you're going to see us out and about a lot. We like to get out and about, we like to do a lot of pre-fire planning, a lot of pre-incident planning, area familiarization, building familiarization, and things of that nature. We like to do a lot of community outreach, answer questions for people along the lines of fire prevention, how to make the building safe, and so on. along the lines of fire prevention, how to make the building safe, and so on and so forth. I definitely want to get very aggressive with that, with our on-duty staff. And they're kind of chomping at the bit to do that. So, yeah, you're going to see us out and about doing a lot of just good community outreach. We also are in the process of planning a training calendar throughout the year. We're going to be conducting a lot of theory and hands-on training with all the personnel, paid and volunteer. One thing that I'd like to report on, we actually have a specialized training plan for February twenty-sixth, and it's kind of an outside-of-the-box training. It involves physical rescue scenarios that range anywhere from somebody with a ring stuck on their finger to someone with their, one of their arms, legs, appendages, whatever, stuck in machinery. We're going to do the first part of the series on February twenty-sixth, and we hope to expand on that. So, like I said, you know, trainings are backbone. It helps us keep prepared to serve you better. You know, we're going to be doing a lot of that. We responded on a pretty significant fire on January twenty-first. A lot of nasty weather, a lot of stumbling blocks, so on and so forth. You know, as the old saying goes, you get by with a little help from your friends. We had a lot of agencies assisting us that night, and I feel that we should recognize them and give them a little bit of thanks. So as far as our mutual aid fire companies, we had South Union, Hopwood, West Lysring, North Union, and Fair Chance. I'd also like to thank the Uniontown City Police. They give us, you know, very valuable assistance at every fire scene. The Uniontown Street Department came out and salted and kept the streets clear for us for fire engines coming in and out and made the scene safer for us. The Uniontown Code Enforcement Department followed up on the next day with the unsafe structure. He jumped on there right away. I'd like to thank Fayette EMS for both providing us EMS standby and a fire rehab unit. They bring out a warming unit, provide fluids, get the guys in and out of the harsh elements, and that's really a godsend whenever you have these extreme fires in either the cold or the warm. Also, I'd like to give a big thanks to the Pennsylvania American Water Company. We have a great working relationship with them. Couple of series of unfortunate events took our water supply out. Those guys were on it just that quick, you know, to get the problem solved and get it fixed. We're very appreciative of that, so. We, as you know, rate several grants. We rate a big FEMA Assistance Firefighters Grant every year. For the 2020 fiscal year grant, we wrote for portable radios and some other equipment. Those items are coming in as we speak. There's going to have to be some programming that goes on with those and so on and so forth. Once I have all the invoices in place, I'm going to hit the request for funds. Once that takes place, the funds are going to come into the city coffers. I'll present you with the invoices and we'll get that squared away. As well, the fiscal year 2019 grant, you know, I'd reported before about the new fire engine that's being built right now. So it's actually getting closer as we speak. Councilman Winfrey's going to accompany us up there next week, and he's going to kind of get to see the facility and how a new fire engine is built. So I'm sure he's probably looking forward to that. And again, once that is completed, they're projecting around April. Again, we'll request the funds. They'll come into the city coffers and present you with everything, get it paid, so. Just a couple of other things. There's a little bit of a delay in the repair facility that's taking care of our damaged ladder truck. He had a job that ran over just a little bit longer than what he anticipated. I have been on the phone with him, with the insurance company, with the adjuster, so on and so forth. Everything's in place. We're just kind of waiting for him to get the repair bay open. So he's thinking and he's hoping probably next week sometime, so. Also, I'd like to give a special thanks to South Union Fire Company for continuing to provide their mutual aid assistance for us while our truck's down. One other thing, Matt had mentioned about snow removal. We put out a little public service announcement over there along with the rest of the packet. Just a little reminder, with the snow and the ice, you know, a lot of times fire hydrants are getting covered up. If you have a fire hydrant in front of your property, beside your property, we would ask that you please, you know, take the time to shovel it out. We recommend about a three-foot perimeter around those. If there's a fire hydrant down the street in front of a vacant property, adopt the hydrant. If you could do us a favor, believe me, the quicker we get water, the quicker we can help you. And that's going to speed up the process, so folks could consider doing that. We would gladly appreciate it. And then last thing, always have to get my advertisement in tonight. If anybody has family members that enjoy bingo, six forty-five at the Fireman's Social Hall on Dunbar Street, so. Guys, one, we'll be glad to have you over there. And I think that's all I have. Apologize for such a long report, though, so, but thank you for everything, Councilman Mayor.
Thank you.
Chris, hey.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Police Department report, Chief DeWitt, please.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, Council, thank you for the votes again for an unexpected equipment purchase that I didn't all want to have to make in the 2022 budget, but we had to unfortunately do that. I'm going to read through our breakdown of stuff and also end with a message that I have that I think is paramount for our department and for our community, which is needed. And I believe we're, we have a very big shortfall that's causing us issues solving crimes. And there's two people seated in this room, and I'll thank you at the end because it's, we're going to have a great relationship that I think is going to foster a lot of good things for us. So during the month of January, the Uniontown Police Department responded to six hundred and fifteen calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included twenty-five vehicle accidents, nine assaults, eight criminal mischiefs, twenty welfare checks, twenty-one domestics, thirteen harassments, three fire calls, ten mental health calls, seven disorderly conducts, eighteen emergency medical assists. This is a big number for me right now, thirty shots fired calls. Of those thirty shots fired calls, eleven calls came on one night between two houses on the top of Union Street, at which point we saturated the area to stop the issue. It's paramount for us as a police department. We're going to continue to address these issues to make our city safe. We're going to do that with our law enforcement partners as well. To continue, seven overdoses, two of which Norcan was administered. Thirty-three suspicious activities, eight suspicious persons, twenty-three thefts. We served seven criminal warrants. Officers made a total of eight criminal arrests, issued seven non-traffic citations, eighteen traffic citations. Uniontown officers also conducted numerous vehicle foot and patrols and bicycle patrols along the Sheepskin Trail like we do every month. On January thirtieth, I'm sure everyone's heard, officers were dispatched to a shots-fired call in the area of Liberty Street and Park Avenue. West Virginia University, Uniontown Hospital Police advised that a gunshot victim had arrived at the hospital by personal vehicle for treatment. The male who was shot in the incident is now deceased, and the case is being handled as a homicide. This case is of extreme importance to the Uniontown City Police Department, and the Pennsylvania State Police are assisting our agency with this investigation. Due to this case still being a very active investigation, no further comment will be provided on that case. I can tell you that we are making headway, and the safety of this city is, and the citizens contained within and the visitors are contained within, are the number-one priority for the officers in my department. The effectiveness of our department is built on the backs of our community. We are only as good as our community is for us. We can know every single detail, but if we don't have community buy-in telling us what's going on, and I understand the pitfalls to that, but we need to create an environment where we are safe, we have people that feel safe to do that. I can know things and not be able to solve a crime because no one will tell me. That takes our community to do that. I live in this community. I'm raising kids here. It is important to me. It is important for the guys working in our agency. When I tell you, I said, these guys are working their tails off right now. I've got guys working twelve, sixteen-hour shifts, volunteering their time the day after to curb the violence that we have. I have guys coming to pick up my take-home car as an unmarked vehicle just so they can sit in the community and hopefully get in the middle of something. They're, they're, these guys, my guys are willing to write a check that's wrote up to their life, including on it. For some of the guys, don't even live in this community, but they're willing to do that for you. Pay it back to them, because we're going to pay it back to you, I promise. I promise. Thank you to Destiny and Angela for taking the time to meet with me and try to figure out a community solution. It's paramount, paramount. My office is open. I'm sure there's people that are going to complain and say we're not doing enough. My office is open. Angela called me yesterday. In five minutes, she was in my office, and I talked to you for what, an hour and a half? Destiny, we met with the mayor for an hour and a half, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
These are the types of things that need to happen. If we're going to make our community better, we need to do it together as a council, as a police department, as a fire department. We are only as good as the community we serve. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief, for all your hard work. Public Works. Anyone have a report? Only thing I can say about Public Works is our streets are cleaned, and I'm sure John is tired of hearing from me. I call him constantly. Someone complains to me, but one thing about the whole street department, at least my experience is, whenever I call, they're on it before I hang the phone. People are calling and saying, hey, thank you, and I haven't even gone off the phone with John yet. So those guys really work. I've been out a few nights just seeing what they're doing, and they do a magnificent job for the city. And I think we shall be appreciative of that department, even though they're strapped with not a lot of employees. They're doing a really good job, so thank you. Thank you very much to everyone that works there. Uniontown Community Development Coordinator, Mr. John, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening again, everybody. To echo the mayor's comments about Johnny and that department, they do work around the clock, and I want to commend them personally for taking that responsibility. We'd asked them to help construct this Sheepskin Trail, and they're willing, more than willing, to do anything they can to use their resources and what we do have in-house to construct that trail. And we will get to that, but number one, grants. Thank you for your support in applying for all these grants. I know it seems like there are a lot. I was raised under the premise that if we keep knocking on doors, someone's about to open one. So if we keep asking and keep asking, something's about to happen. We did get notice that we got approved for the Municipal Assistance Program Grant, which enables us to move forward with the comprehensive plan that is so badly needed in our city. So I think we're going to get started on that as soon as possible. We got word today that we got the appropriate signatures needed to get those funds, so we will be advertising for a proposal for different firms to submit so that we can start our comprehensive plan process. Baseball at Bailey Park, Councilman Shuhon and I had a conversation yesterday. We had met with some Little League officials from the Conneville and Dunbar Little League, and they would like to use Bailey Park for their regional tournaments and sectional tournaments, as well as their All-Star weekends, which would bring hundreds and hundreds of people into our city, into Bailey Park, for days at a time. And it's the hope that those people stay in town, eat in town, play in town, and recognize what we do have in further enhancing our tourism industry. They also would like to develop a league in which Bailey Park is a Little League field, a home field to a few of their teams. And this is coming at almost zero effort on the city's part. All we have to do is give them the okay to use Bailey Park in that Little League field, and they want to utilize it and bring life back to Bailey Park. And I think that's a big step in how we can start to curb this violence that we've been talking about. You know, if we keep our youth busy and we give them things to do, then five, six, seven years from now, we're going to see the differences in what we can, in the society in which we find ourselves. The farmer's market, we had a meet-and-greet last week to discuss how we can successfully host a farmer's market in town. Thank you in attendance who were there. And we are going to proceed with having a farmer's market. The dates and whereabouts are still up in the air, as we're going to meet next Thursday with the same people who were at last week's meeting. And we're going to start bringing fresh local food and local goods back into our city, which is well, much needed. Carnegie Mellon, and that partnership with Carnegie Mellon, and we've been discussing this for some time, it has begun. Thank you for those of you who are serving on the Advisory Board Committee. That first meeting with the cohort of graduate students is set to be Sunday at Caparella's with the cohort of grad students, as well as the Advisory Board Committee members that can be there. So we're looking forward to the studies and data analytics that the students from Carnegie Mellon will provide us. Sheepskin Trail, it continues to be a daily work in progress, and I thank those of you who took the time out of a busy night, eight-thirty to almost ten o'clock last night. Citizens, residents, people who care, enthusiasts, taking time out of their night to talk about how we can move the event we're having forward. Thank you for your vote. That event, again, is aimed to raise money for the construction of the Sheepskin Trail, which is going to be paramount to the progression of our city. And that construction of the trail is at the forefront of what we want to do. And again, I want to thank Johnny and the street department for committing to building that first eight, nine-hundred feet from where it currently ends at the South Union border to Dunbar Street and the street department. And then we'll go from there. We'll see what this event brings and see what happens. And lastly, I want to thank the Trot family and the Gartley family and the Talkington family for all you guys do. No matter what's going on in the city, you guys are there, and you guys are supportive, and you care. And that's what it's going to take for us to build back our community. Not to say that we don't have a great community, because we do. We have one in which we all take great pride. However, I don't think any of us are satisfied with where we are in any aspect of where we are. So I thank you guys for your continued support and your continued efforts. Council, Mayor, questions?
In regards to the Little League at Bailey Park, any talk of permanent lights that are getting fixed? Or what's the status?
Absolutely. And can I, can I even speak on that? It's all second-hand knowledge. That is in the hands of the Union Town, the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town. And they are in the process of preparing bids and going about the process to solicit bids and solicit quotes so that we can get those lights back up. Working in these situations, there was a lot of red tape through which we needed to cut. And those lights at Bailey, we aren't sure if they're going to be up by baseball season, which is why we ask Council, and again, thank you, Council and Mayor, for your support in that resolution. If we do not have lights by that time, we want to rent lights and provide those student athletes with the experience that they all deserve and are well-deserved of.
From what I seen today, I was down there today, it looked like there was just two banks of lights that need replaced?
No, there are three light standards that need to be restored. And for those of you who haven't been following our meetings for the last eight, nine months, we have to actually repour the concrete pads, which takes some time. And again, thank you to K-2 Engineering and Mr. Over for all the work that they've done on the side with providing us with drawings and providing us with the necessary things we need to move forward in this process. So we have to repour the concrete bases, and then we have to re-stand the poles. Then we actually have to retrofit the lights, because they've been down for over a year and a half, and those lights have become damaged. One thing we really want to look at is when we do retrofit these lights, can we retrofit them with LED lighting rather than the traditional lighting that is there that is actually drinking electricity and way more than it should? And if we want to be conscientious of how we can self-sustain as a community, I think when we do retrofit these lights and on the softball field as well, we should look into LED lighting. Again, we're a city that's strapped, so maybe we can get creative and find ways to do this. But again, if we knock on enough doors, somebody's about to answer. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know if you noticed, a lot of lights along the highway will have solar panels so that they recharge, and is that an option you might consider?
I would imagine so. Again, this is all at the hands of the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town, and they kind of have control over the funding for these lights. And control is not really a good word to use. We work very closely with the Redevelopment Authority, as well as the Downtown Business District Authority. And if we want to be successful as a city, we kind of have to work with all of those arms so that we can come together for the best possible and sustainable solutions. I'm not sure in terms of if solar panel light is enough for what the baseball field needs, but it's certainly an option. And while we're on the topic of some of these things, the Sheepskin Trail, it would be nice to see some of those solar panel lights lining the trail. That's a question or a topic of conversation that we had with, I don't want to mention his name, but a representative from, I don't want to mention his name, but somebody who is very interested in trying to get lighting on the trail. So LED lighting and solar panel lighting is certainly an option there.
I need to add to that, I would like to also look into natural gas generation points for the park for the lights. And natural gas generation coupled with the solar and the wind, the small wind turbines, this is where we can start to roll the dial back on our city. on our city utilities. So I'm really, you know, that's gonna be something I'm gonna be pushing, is the natural gas generator for Bailey Park to run those LED lights.
And if we take a look at Bailey Park, everything there in terms of electricity is completely outdated, and we're drinking electricity. And that was, again, I don't want to mention any names, but, you know, we're wasting resources. And I think we are at a time of our lives and society where we have to start thinking about self-sustaining rather than draining. And I'm calling on West Penn Power right now to, you know, step forward and help us come up with a solution to fix the electricity problem at Bailey Park. And I'm only calling them on right now because they said they were going to about seven or eight months ago, sometime in the summer, when I had met a representative there. And we're yet to hear from them. So it would be nice for some of these utility companies to step forward and help us along the way. And as they were talking to me and saying, you know, we have to change this, we have to change this, and move that electrical box, what's that gonna cost us? Well, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, the gentleman told me. There are ways to do that. So, you know, we're asking you right now, West Penn Power, to come on out and help us take a look at how we can conserve some energy.
Mr. John, do we have an invitation to them for the Sheepskin Trail event?
Absolutely. And we just picked up the invitations today, and the mayor and I plan on going out and hand delivering some of those to, you know, some people out there who want to contribute and make the construction of this trail possible. There are some bells and whistles along with that invitation, but we feel that this event is going to be a successful one, and one that it is going to enable us to construct this trail. I don't want to set any timelines, because, you know, I tend to set goals a little bit too lofty. I don't want to paint ourselves into a corner, but this is something that's at the forefront of what we need to do to progress as a city. Yes, sir?
Just, um, in order, are you over Parks and Recs?
I'm not a title person, but the official title is Director of Community Development. And I would imagine that that encompasses pretty much everything that goes along with developing our community. So Parks and Rec is something that is, again, I think we need to take a very serious look at and provide an avenue for our youth to where they are busy from the time they're out of school to the time school starts again in the fall, as well as offering after-school programs as well.
Because I'm hearing a lot about Bailey Park. My question is just more curious towards, is there any community development stage for Grant Street Park? Because it's, I don't even know about what's wrong with Grant Street right now. So I'm just wondering, with all this lighting and stuff, can we get the concrete flipped, fixed at Grant Street, so the kids can play on concrete, please? And that's more my question. I didn't know if Parks and Recs are you or...
Actually, it's me.
It's, yeah, Councilman Shuhon, and I'll be honest, I ran the Grant Street Basketball League for two years. I don't know if you remember, but, you know, it, nobody wants to single out one park. We have children all through the city, so it's Grant Street, it's Bailey Park. We've got other parks scattered around the city that we really need to take a real strong look at and develop all of them, rather than just one here and one there. You know, it's our hopes to get that basketball league at Grant Street again, but it's also our hopes to get baseball at Bailey. And when you're, you have a high school team using the fields at Bailey Park, you know, we have some needs that need to be addressed. And I don't think it's one park versus another. I think we're one city with a whole system of parks and recreation.
I understand that, but when you see a lot of money dumped into one park...
Absolutely.
...the other part, then it is a concern.
Abs, and I grew up in...
There's a lot of money that is dumped into Bailey, to where...
Not recently, not since I've been on board.
Well, let me just say, there's more done to Bailey than there is to Grant. We just got bleachers done where wood was placed over old bleacher seats.
And I...
Instead of the old bleacher seats being taken off, and new ones put on.
And I can empathize there. And if you go by Bailey, those bleachers are exactly the same as they are at Grant. And again, I grew up playing basketball and baseball at Bailey and Grant, so those, both of those places have an affinity to me.
That was just one concern. I...
I actually, there's a group called Project Backboard that we would like to reach out to, to see if they would paint the courts at Bailey, to fix, at Grant Street, to fix those courts and paint them. And what this Project Backboard does, they will match grant funding, and they will come in and resurface basketball courts, and they will paint murals on the basketball courts that depict your city or your park's history.
The basketball courts are the problem, it's the brush rooms, it's the, it's the ninety other things.
Have any of this been right to account?
That are safety issues, that the city could be liable for a lawsuit. I mean, we've got one stall in the men's room, and the other stall covered up with plastic for the last six years. I mean, this is, this is stuff where it's health-related issues. Water not working right. We've got states coming up all over the ground that kids gotta run around and play around. This is, these are concerns that where if a kid would fall, hurt yourself, the city's liable for that. I mean, these are things, like I said, I've got a list that I can present to you, where it's more important than lights at Bailey.
Then we should all sit down together and go over these lists. And again, part of the comprehensive plan that we want to develop, Parks and Recreation has to be a part of that. And it's gotta be all parks, and it's gotta be the list of things that need fixed, the list of things that we need to provide for our kids.
Priority.
Prior, absolutely, prioritize. And how do we get there? You know, we're, yes, ma'am?
I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I hear you. And I understand your, you put your title in.
Just Community Development.
Okay, Community Development. There's a clear divide, and I know it's not intentional. And I always hear about Sheepskin Trail, I always hear about all these parks. The East End community, our community, is completely neglected. And we should not have to come to have a meeting when you ride through it every day and see it's completely neglected. There are children that play in those parks to this day. All these children are out, they're not criminals, they're not shooting, our kids want to play too. Okay? So you guys know that there's an issue up here, and it needs to be addressed. And all this money is flowing, and flowing, and is flowing. Can you please remember us up here? Because we need a facility for these children to have fun in. They're not gonna walk down there, their parents aren't gonna be dedicated. They need something set in stone on the East End. We're making a recreational center, counseling services. They need that. And the mall's not gonna kick, because they can't make it out there. So please just remember us, because we're completely forgotten.
Again, ma'am, I am a hundred percent in agreement with you. Again, and when we, when we visit this comprehensive plan and take a total look at the city in general, not just the downtown area, or Bailey Park, or Grant, it's the East End, it's the West Side, it's all of Union Town.
I hear what you're saying, but that's, it's nothing is getting done.
No, it's not.
And I, and I hear what you're saying, and I'm directing this toward you. I'm just saying, when you're doing your comprehensive plan, you're forgetting a whole section of the city. And let me just say this, even though it's the city of Union Town, we are all Union Town residents, this is a house, okay? South Union, there's a room in your house that is disgusting and dirty, and it needs cleaned up. And it makes us all look bad as Union Town residents, okay? So while we're having these strong residents and stuff, can you remember some of the leaders in the community that are willing to help?
Yeah, let's get together.
Because we are all powerful for each other, are we not? Are we all not residents of Union Town? There is a room in Union Town that is dirty, and we need everybody to pitch in, from South Union, everywhere. Please help us.
Yeah, let's get together.
If you're having a comprehensive plan, be fair across the board, all the same.
A hundred percent, ma'am.
If I could add, if I could add to that, so when we start doing this comprehensive plan?
When we start?
Yeah.
We haven't started.
We are going to need to get steering committees and proper committees, and this is all city residents that need to be a part of this. So what you're talking about, please, you know, throw your name in the hat for this and get on one of these steering committees, so we can have people from all over our city that represents different parts. And we're talking about, it doesn't matter if you're professionals, if you're an engineer, if you're a retired professional, or whatever it is. We need these people from the community that are gonna take part in these steering committees and be a part of this. So it's not necessarily all city council that is going to set this direction. The direction comes from the community. It's going to come through these little boards and steering committees that's gonna be a part of this, this comprehensive plan of action. So, please, I would say to Mr. John, forward your information so that whenever we start this process, that we can personally reach out to you and have you get on this committee. I think that would be a great avenue.
I hear you, but as a human, as a public servant, someone in the community should not have to be coming to you and reaching out to you when you're well aware of the town that you live in. You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
So we, that, to me, that sounds like a kind of a little pop-up to me, because you are aware of the condition of Union Town everywhere. So, just please let it, to be in your heart, I just want a plan seen in your hearts, to just remember us, even if no one steps up and asks and reaches out to you. Can you just remember us?
One hundred percent. And again, part of this comprehensive plan is representatives from each community, each neighborhood, each part of the city. We have to have that, we have to have that involvement. The families that I had thanked ten minutes ago are people that reach out to us that, hey, can we do this and can we do this? Absolutely. So it does take everybody coming together, and it does take a city to pull each other up. It takes all the neighborhoods. Rising tides lift all boats, but we have to do it together. We can't...
We've been screaming for years.
Well, I've only been here for eight months. I've only been here for eight months, ma'am.
I hear you. Now, I don't want you guys to think I'm being combative.
Or directing, it's not personally directed to us.
We know it's not. We, the residents have been screaming for years.
Well, then where do we go? How do we, how do we do it?
On the same social media, we all see comments, we all see what everyone's saying. It's not a mystery, and that's all. And I appreciate everything, but it's because the parts of town is beautiful, beautiful. But I'm telling you, there's a room in your house that's filthy and you need another tenant, and it reflects you. It reflects, every class, one of us. And we, like, there are certain leaders, I'm looking at several of them, that do so much for the community, but our heads are literally tied, you know? So when this money's flowing, can we please let it flow up the hill, to view our neighborhood and give the kids who want to do something, the kids who are, that have promised, do something too. That's all. That's all.
And I think I just said that five minutes ago, that we have to reinvest in our youth, and it's all of our youth, not one particular neighborhood or one particular street. It's all of our youth in the city of Union Town. South Union and North Union, they do have some amenities and some programs where they can help their kids. We need more in our city. We need the after-school programs. We need the science and the engineering and the technology and the robotics stuff that interest these kids these days. We have to find out what that is and grab them when they're five, six, and seven, and eight years old, so that when they're sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, they're going off to a school somewhere and then coming back home to share what they got. That's what we do have to do. So, ma'am, please, reach out to me, call me, email me, see me after this. Let's get together as a community and see how we can do this. And when the comprehensive plan does begin, there is going to be, it's, it's not done by us, so everybody knows, a comprehensive plan is done by some sort of firm that's put together. Some sort of, you got a group of engineers, you got a group of community development specialists, you got outreach specialists. If the people we think are awarded the comprehensive plan, if that goes through, there's a team of about seven people, and one of them is going to specialize in developing the community relation aspect of it, so that every neighborhood is involved, and not just involved, but they provide that input, that necessary input. So I know you guys hear me up here talking about Bailey Park and the Sheepskin Trail. When I got hired, the mayor said, build the Sheepskin Trail. Okay?
It's there, because it's beautiful.
Well, and it's, when it does come through town, and it goes right up Beeson Boulevard on the right-hand side of the road, and we do start to see this store pop up and that store pop up, and some Airbnbs right here, and an ice cream shop over there, that stuff is gonna lift all the other neighborhoods. And it is gonna give people something to want to do, and something to, I'm gonna go ride my bike on that trail, I'm gonna go do something on that trail. The county, the commissioners in the county have the Gallatin Bank Building, and they're going to do something with that. So when we talk about developing the trail, you know, I apologize if it's something everybody else doesn't want to hear, but again, we gotta start somewhere. And if we can start economically to develop our town, then everything else is gonna see from it. Now, the comprehensive plan opens us up to applying for grants. So we partner with the East End Community Center, if you guys want to. And we partner with other entities that, when you work together to apply for grants, and the people administering those grants or have a say-so in those grants, see that it's somewhere in your comprehensive plan, then boom, you're will, you're much more apt to get that grant. So that's when the money starts flowing. Right now, we still struggle. So even though one house, one room in the house is dirty, we still got a lot of cleaning up to do over here and on the front door and on the back porch. We gotta clean up everywhere. But, listen, as long as I'm here, I'm committed to you.
I understand, but here's the thing. When I clean my kitchen, I clean my kitchen, you know, sometimes I won't get the toaster up right away, you know, because I know it basically cleaned, and I move on to another side of my house, I move on to another room of my house. It's beautiful what you're doing down there. I understand your vision, I get it, okay? But spread it, okay? There's more, there's enough resources to spread. Don't focus all your time on just downtown and trails, because first of all, we have to shoot these kids' minds. And it's not, you know, there's teenagers and adolescents that went out, they went away, they have, they lost hope. So we have to focus on that first. There's priorities, like I said, there's priorities to this. And you start, it's beautiful. I think you can steer away for just a little while, it's beautiful. And let's go ahead on, let's move up, let's keep moving, and take more round, and take more round. You know, just like with the new houses, like, if you love that idea, if you love some beautiful houses, but you don't, yeah, make the neighborhood better. Let's move, let's keep moving it, we have to have momentum. And just things like it's stuck in one spot. And I might say you're going intentionally, but I'm telling you, the residents are thinking it's the other side. And I know that's not your intent, you know what I'm saying? And I would be wrong if I didn't tell you.
Hundred percent.
And I make myself certain, no, it looks like a straight, clear line. And I know that's not where you're coming from, okay? So, because it's beautiful what you do. I love it, I love riding through, I love seeing, you know? And I would love to help you, I would love to help you with any project you have. But I have to tell you what's being said, by the residents and the circle. That's, that's what we're supposed to do.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
As I go through the tax papers, and I think it would help the people here, if I'm starting to pay their taxes, that would help with a whole lot of your stuff.
Yes, Ms. Stroud?
I would like to ask your question, because I have interest in Parks and Recs.
Excuse me, guys, we can't, we can't hear up here.
I have interest in Parks and Recs across the city, citywide. So I guess, and maybe this is general knowledge that I'm not familiar with, but if I have a concern, I would up here if we wanted to go about stopping traffic through Bailey Park, and Grant Street, I do have concerns as well. Where, who is the contact person? Is it Mr. Shuhon, or, or you're the...
Yeah, I just took it over in January.
Okay. So we should, I mean, did we used to have a Parks and Recs board, that we don't have anymore? Do we need a Parks and Recs board? How do we fund?
Absolutely. I think so. I mean, we can't do it alone, because we, we don't have the resources. We can't do it all by ourselves.
I know you speak a lot about parks, and that's great. I just don't, as a citizen, we're concerned about parks. I don't know the best way to take my concerns. It's just too clear, and you see, I don't know if he's the board, I don't know if I need to step up, somebody else step up, I don't know. But I will come to Mr. Shuhon at this time.
Yep.
So, you know, I will be back for the next step. What, to me, it was changed, it was, or some sort of barricade to stop cars coming through Bailey. I will be back with my next plan.
We did that already.
Which to me, is at this point, is regular trash pickup, and trash cans that don't blow over, and that would be my next plan. So, just, I don't know where to go. We've got a long way to go, Parks across the city. I don't even know. I mean, I think we need to identify what our city parks are. Bailey, Grant, Collic, is that, is that where we're at? Is Collic on?
No, Collic's still around. Chestnut Ridge is owned by the city, is that correct?
Oh, my, is it? Four, we have four city parks? Is there one, is there still one? Like, I just think that's a good question to ask.
Kelly, could you, um, could you carry this conversation to public comment?
Yes.
We, we would like to move on. So if you have any other comments about what we're talking about now, we could do that in, in public comment, okay? Mr. John, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, guys.
As always, thank you, Mr. John, Director of Planning and Community Relations, Ms. Kuteck. She's not in attendance this evening, but I have her report to read at this time, and I will now. Good evening, Mayor Gerke and council members. First, I would like to welcome a new business to the city of Union Town, Simply Sweet, located at twenty-one North Beeson Avenue. Seen a call for all of your event planning, party needs, and retail therapy. January projects that I've been working on with the hopes of completing soon. Number one, a tattered flag drop box for citizens and businesses to use once their flights become worn. become worn. Fayette County Courthouse has one located inside the building. However, it's my hope to have one centrally located within the city limits. Secondly, a warming center for those in need when the temperature falls. If anyone has any ideas, please contact me. And lastly, I would like to get a date on the calendar for a springwide cleanup day. In the past, this event has had a significant impact on the areas of the city that need it the most, and made possible by countless dedicated volunteers pitching in to make a difference. In closing, as some of you may know, I was mandated to quarantine and soon later tested positive for COVID. At this time, I'm still experiencing lingering symptoms. I've done my best to do as much as I can while under doctor's care, with the hopes of returning to full time soon. Thank you for your time, Laura Kuteck. And that's all I have to say. At this time, we'll go to public comment. Whenever you make your comments, we have the rules that we've, the council has set forth, and they're on the doors, and the one major rule that we try to adhere by is limit your comments for three minutes, so that everyone can get a chance to speak. And whenever you do, whenever I do call upon you to speak, please state your name, your address, and come to the podium to make your presentation. At this time, is there any public comment? Yes, sir?
My name is Charles Cuppitt, and I live at twelve North Emerson Street here in the city of Uniontown. Most recently, the citizens up there are concerned about the property, the old Craig Estate, and the fact that after John Giuliano passed away, the surviving family sold the property. And I know for a fact, from Mr. Giuliani, that that property has been its own business for quite some time. But most recently, rumor control has it that Dollar General is going to put a store there. So my concern primarily being that I live directly across the street from the Craig Estate is, what plans does this council have or have received from any development architects, site design, anything? Have you received anything at all? As to the access and egress, what street are they coming in on? How are they gonna get their freight trucks to bring the merchandise to the stores? Emerson Street, yeah, North Emerson is a residential street with a cul-de-sac at the end of it. How in the world would anyone ever consider trying to get a tractor trailer down there with a fifty-three-foot trailer on it? Okay? Do you have any information? Site designs, architectural renderings of the property, the building, the site work? Where's the water gonna go?
Mr. Over, maybe you have an answer for us?
So my office has received a couple of calls from the potential developer. We have nothing relative to any type of site. They're in their due diligence phase right now. So they're working through that process. Based on what we've been told, I can tell you that there won't be any access back to Emerson Street. Any proposed entrance into, any proposed development would be off of Morgantown, which is a state highway, and they would have to go through that process to receive a driveway permit from the state.
Okay. So in the process, you're starting to get information concerning that building and the business?
Yes. I mean, we've been involved in other Dollar Generals in the city, so we pretty much know what their site plan is. I mean, we've, my office in the communities that we represent, we've been involved in like seven Dollar Generals. They have six or seven different models that they go by, and what one fits on their proposed lot, and we haven't even, we don't even know what the proposed lot is at this point.
Are you aware of the storm-water runoff problem from North Emerson, near the cul-de-sac, down to Union Street, the residence at three seventy-six?
Yes. We've been working with John. I know that John has a project in mind to do some stormwater work there. Irregardless of that problem, the city does have a stormwater management ordinance, and the DEP has an ordinance that the developer will have to basically adhere to, and I can tell you that ordinance requires them to retain fifty-five percent of the pre-development rate. So they'll actually have to release less water after development than they do right now, than what gets released right now.
The water is coming down there, and I have the photographs, and I'd like to give it to the Honorable Mayor. This was taken from my front porch in July of twenty nineteen. There are two drain inlets right there under that BMW that no longer works because it was flooded. From the first, I've lived up there thirty years, and I've never seen the water. I've seen it pool many, many times, but it usually came up about the curb height and stop. And I was always happy because I rated my property based on, if the water does come up, it'll go in between or around my house. Okay? Well, this did. It was two inches of water going around the side of my house, there's the backyard flowing towards three seventy-six, Union Street. That man had water in his basement that touched the bottom of his first floor deists. And somebody has to remember when that happened, because everybody was pumping water at that time. My basement, you may have those, I can get those pictures anytime. It's not a good picture of the water going by, but that was two inches deep, five inches, an asphalt driveway.
If I could add, drainage problem right in front of Ben Franklin School as well, and every time it rains, they have to have somebody...
Yeah, we have drainage problems up here. So even if they...
We're gonna give someone else a time to speak now, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir? Okay.
My name is Debbie Miller, and I live at two North Emerson Street. And in August, I received a text message from a friend that said that the property was purchased and that a Dollar General was coming. I knew since then. I'm gonna read this quickly, I hope. Three sixty-seven Morgantown Street, site of the historic Craig Mansion, which sits beside Ben Franklin K through eight school, has been bought to build a Dollar General. The city engineer zoning map states it is owned residential. The county website says R three, residential, multiple families. A Dollar General on this property will disturb the quiet neighbor, community. It will also contribute to traffic on Morgantown Street and throughout the neighborhood. Morgantown Street is already very busy and congested with both regular traffic and school drop-off and pickup traffic. This will be amplified greatly if Dollar General builds here. The entrance will likely be right in the middle of the car pickup line, which is there, from about one forty-five to three fifteen. Studies document a rise in crime rates after Dollar General opens. This has already happened in our own community at other nearby Dollar Generals. The latest incident was January thirty-first, four days ago, when shots were fired at the Dollar General on North Gallatin Avenue Extension. Imagine that happening in a busy city street beside a school. No one, no store of this type belongs near a school and our vulnerable children. And while dollar stores claim to help community challenged, economically challenged areas, they are known for having smaller packaging and higher prices, and they actually hurt the business growth. Studies show that retail businesses avoid municipal areas with multiple dollar stores because these stores signal the economic decline of an area, and so the area is not seen as a good place to invest. And none of the profits from this store will come back into our community. But they do have their place. They are very welcome in small communities that have few, if any, stores, also known as food deserts. Not one part of Uniontown falls into the category of a food desert. The proposed site is almost a half mile away from two full grocery stores and two dollar stores, and one of them is a Dollar General. We don't need any more. The mansion on the property holds great significance in both architecture and history. While the rumor is that it will be saved, imagine the beautiful historic home in the parking lot of a Dollar General. Uniontown, founded on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six, is rich in history and should embrace and hold dear these great treasures.
Can you wrap things up, Ms. Miller? Your time is...
Okay.
Thank you. You can wrap up your...
Somebody's no...
Another, okay. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name is John Shoner, and I've been a resident of Uniontown since nineteen ninety-six, and I live at sixty-two Charles Street. I speak today as a concerned and involved citizen regarding the possibility of a Dollar General being built next to Ben Franklin School. I'm not against the existence of Dollar General and do believe they fulfill a specific need. However, their continued proliferation in many communities has become a concern. Their strategy is saturation, and that has the effect of discouraging full-service stores and locally-owned small businesses, as well as other investments that may benefit the local economy. In and around Uniontown, we already have six that I counted, and one that is less than a mile from the current proposed location. Other issues that arise with dollar stores of this type include crime. They tend to have few staff, the aisles are narrow, and they carry cash, making them easy targets for robbery, shoplifting, or as a location for other criminal activity. Only a few days ago, there was an incident at another dollar store in Uniontown involving fire harms, shots fired, and a foot chase. What happens of similar incident takes place, and the location is next to a school. I do realize crime can happen anywhere, however, there is a higher risk here, and we can avoid, and if we can avoid exposing our children, students, faculty, and staff of a school to that increased risk, we should. Lastly, I have two children that attend Ben Franklin School, and I have been in the drop-off and pickup lines that form near the school. Anyone who picks up their children daily will tell you that the line forms up the street is dangerous. One of my key observations over the last several years has that the school's zone lights do not work properly, are only on the northbound direction of Morgantown Street, and the speed limit in the zone is not enforced. I recall a conversation with one of Ben Franklin's security guards, as she told me that she was nearly hit by a speeding vehicle while helping students cross Morgantown Street. Although I and others intend to pursue the school's zone traffic lights and speed enforcement as a separate issue for both Ben Franklin and Lafayette schools, we see it as a problem that will only be further amplified with the addition of a retail business next to Ben Franklin. Council members, we hope this makes you aware of our concerns, and ask that you, as leaders, will work with us to ensure our children are safe, Uniontown's historical integrity is preserved, and that our community maintains a commitment to local business, and not to an eight-point-five-billion-dollar company that has already what we believe are enough stores in our area and whose only focus are its earnings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Sam Patrisselli. I live at ninety-nine West Craig Street. It is on one side of the school. Craig Mansion's on the other side of the school. Don't have anything official or any statistics here, just what I witness on a daily basis as far as the congestion in my neighborhood. In the years that I've been there, the nine years I've owned my home, I've seen our crossing guards disappear from the school. Again, I could testify to the speed limit. There's a thirty-five mile per hour sign on Craig Street facing a red light, which makes no sense to me. Obviously, the flashing lights aren't always working in front of the school, and there is a heavy traffic problem. When parents are picking up and dropping off, it's almost near impossible to get through that part of Morgantown Street without delays. I also know there's gonna be a heavy problem with people trespassing as far as it's gated off, and all walking traffic is essentially going to be walking up in Craig Meadows and crossing through people's yards to get to the back or the side entrance of the Dollar General. I just want to second the notion that I would like to see this reconsidered, and I would like us to draw a line as to what is a neighborhood and what is a shopping center, and I sure don't wanna see this Dollar General go. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think this is for taller people than me. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Christine Buckleoo. I live at one forty-five Southeaston Avenue. I am a former BF parent, and I spent my days waiting to, for my children to come out. But I'm also here representing the Fayette County Historical Society, where I am the president. I would be most welcome and happy to work with anybody who would like to know more about the history of the house, the Craig Mansion. Probably most of you don't know that the person who built that home about eighteen seventy-six was actually a descendant of John Smiley, the honorable John Smiley, who was one of the framers of our Constitution. A lot of people don't know that. This is significant. He is gone with Albert Gallatin, and of course, we all know Albert Gallatin, but how many of us know John Smiley? And we should, and it should be taught. Another thing we need to know and to recall is that this is the nexus of the sheep's, of the Nemecola's Trail and of the Cattabba Trail that went right through that property. That property was owned by the Reverend Brownfield. It was called Gretna Green, and if any of you have any interest in learning more about it, but that comes from Scotland, was the most beautiful site, and it was where all the lovers went before they were married. Gretna Green was what was called Ben Franklin's school, where the Craig Mansion is, forever. That's what it was called, even into the sixties and seventies. It still was referred to that because that was such a beautiful site. I don't want to see that place destroyed, to be replaced, and I am encouraging everybody to learn more about it, and I am here to help, and I have the full backing of the Fayette County Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name's Jim Hersick. I'm here representing the Greater Uniontown Joint Sewage Plant Authority. So we're really kinda changing directions here from the Dollar General. Just wanted to give you some information and then ask for your assistance in a project. We, at the Sewage Authority, as you know, we work with North Union, South Union, and the city to treat all of the sewage in the area. For the fifth year in a row, I'm pleased to tell you that our sewage rates to the three municipalities have not changed, so there'll be no increase to the city and the city residents from our side of the coin. Also, for about the fourth year in a row, we came under budget, and there will be a, as per our agreements with the three municipalities, there will be either a credit or a refund due to each one of the municipalities, as soon as our audit is complete here in probably another two months. On the other side of the coin, we are having a tremendous problem with storm water. As you know, and as the city council knows, you're currently under a corrective action plan with DEP to get your storm water out of the sewer lines. On a rain event such as today, our average daily flow out there is about six million gallons. I just spoke with our plant superintendent before I came to the meeting. Today, because of the rain, we're running at twenty-two million gallons a day. That is our capacity, and every time there's a rain event, it spikes within a half an hour to the plant. Two years ago, we, as Mr. Over will attest, the plant undertook the cleaning of all the interceptors, the televising of all the interceptors, and a detailed report was issued to all three municipalities showing where problem areas were with infiltration, where the surface water was getting into the sewer system that is not allowed. We would urge you to please take a look at that. We would urge you to, to please take a look at that information that we provided, and please budget some money. I know there's some CARES money coming down the road, there's infrastructure money coming down the road. The sewer system in Union Town is probably 150 years old and is in desperate need of updating. Currently, the reason I'm here this evening is we have a tremendous problem at the bottom of Kerr Street. That was identified in our study as the worst contributing place in Union Town. There is actually surface water, storm water, inlets directly dumping into the sewer lines down there, and we're receiving that water within 30 minutes of a rain event. And it, it's tremendous amount of water that needs to be taken out. Our engineer has met with K-2, we've spoken. This has been an ongoing problem for years. Part of the issue is, at the bottom of Kerr Street is the city line with North Union Township. We're also, I'm also approaching North Union Township supervisors, so the three of us, North Union, the Greater, and Union Town City can work to solve this problem. When there's a rain event, there's 600 to 700,000 gallons of surface water entering in our system with just a half an inch of rain at that point. As I say, it was the point that was determined to be the most problematic in the entire system. And we would ask that North Union and the city consider using the refund money, because we were under budget last year, to put towards this separation that would help everybody out tremendously.
Thank you very much.
Also, one last thing. Your Chapter 94 reports are due, so if you'd please forward the information to the Greater Union Town so that we can submit it to the DEP in a timely manner, and that report asks for any improvements that you've made to the system during the past year. You're also required to put that in your corrective action plan to DEP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hersick.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir.
Jesse Blackburn. I live on Union Street here in the city. First, I'd like to address Mr. Billy, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Winfrey, Mr. Schuhon. At the last meeting, I made a physical display of displeasure directed at one number that's not here, and it was not intended towards anyone else, and I apologize if it was observed that way or taken that way. It was not intended for any of you guys. I have my personal reasons, but because the individual isn't here, I'm not going to get into those. I would like to basically jump on the bandwagon and say that I too am concerned about the Dollar General that's going in on Morgantown Street, or proposed Dollar General going in there. I have children that go to BF. The traffic is horrendous to drop them off, pick them up. I am concerned about the safety of the school and the children. It's clear that those stores don't provide adequate security, adequate staffing, and if you do go into those stores, who do you see working? You don't see intimidating large men that will chase people away or provide that kind of deterrent necessary to ensure safety if no other security officer is available. What you see is elderly women and smaller, basically females that are easily targeted by violent criminals. And it's a shame that a city that's supposed to be a tourist city, city is trying to bring in a Dollar General or going to allow this to happen, whenever we have a beautiful historic location that could be promoted or used in a variety of ways that would add on to this wonderful city and the industry that we do have. So as a concerned citizen, I do hope you guys, I don't know what your powers would be, or if you guys have any ability, but that would be an opportunity missed if we let a Dollar General go in there, in my opinion. So those are my comments for this month, and I look forward to next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments this evening?
My name's Franklin LaCava. I've made my life work, I suppose, in writing and the management of small museums. I'm a past president of the Fayette County Historical Society, and the neighborhood I grew up in is around Craig School and the old Craig Mansion. I think I knew the history of the neighborhood and the building fairly well. I want to ask you all, when you come into a city or a new area, do you ever think about the first things you see and the impressions you leave with? When you come into that area of Union Town, a lot of traffic comes down 119, that building is one of the first things people see in entering Union Town, and it presents the best of impressions. It's an 1876 mansion that's really unique in terms of its architecture. It's a combination of Jacobian and steamboat architecture. You'll notice it's laid out like a southern plantation. Mr. Craig, when he designed it, had been on a tour of the south and picked up those various designs, the steamboat aspect of the architecture, the gingerbread and bric-a-brac around the porches is something unique to this county. I know of no other building built like that. The Craig Farm at one time reached from the shopping center down to where Craig's School is. Both the properties at Ben Franklin and Craig were given by the family to the school district. I think they were a little land poor, but they developed two of the most beautiful developments in the city, Craig Meadows 1 and 2. And that old manor house really frames that, that whole development. To allow a Dollar General in there, and I have nothing against Dollar General, but you have to think what sort of places Dollar General serves, rural areas and places where, you know, stores just don't exist. Morgantown Street is quite well-developed, and we've got to ask ourselves, what kind of city do we want? And I would submit to you all this evening, in talking about a planning committee and planning for the parks, that we take it upon ourselves to create some sort of specifications, be they zoning ordinances or guidelines, to ensure the cultural integrity of the city, simply the views, the viewscape. The Craig Mansion is something that's right about Union Town, and to destroy it, we'd lose something that, you know, an architect couldn't build. So I would open myself to the city council tonight. If you'd like to ask me any questions about the history or what's the significance of the building, I'll try to answer and not make up too much. Historians always make up a little bit. Questions, sir?
No questions, but thank you for your presentation.
Yes. Yeah, and I would be happy to participate in any, you know, committee or organization you put together to, you know, make some suggestions and draw up some guidelines, a comprehensive plan, possibly, something like that, you know, to simply ensure the integrity of the city. The Craig Mansion's not the only great building.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'm Kelly Judy, 87 Seventh Street. I live in South Union, but I'm representing the common good of Union Town for all the reasons we're mentioning tonight concerning Dollar General. But I was raised in the city. My mom still lives in the city. My daughter goes to her house regularly, plays in the city, she's in that neighborhood. And after high school, it really doesn't matter if you're from the city or the township. We're not LH or UHS, we're just Union Town. That's what we write as our address. What happens here affects us all. It affects our future, our future generations, and the legacies we leave them. That's why we all care. We want to leave them our history, our original buildings, our landmarks. They're what make our, our area beautiful, special, and unique, so let's preserve them. And for those who have forgotten that, who take the beauty of our area for granted, let's remind them by saving this property and its buildings and its land from becoming the ninth Dollar General that has a Union Town address. This area is currently in a revitalization in downtown Union Town. We have new businesses, we have the expansion of the Sheepskin Trail, so let's keep moving in that direction. Let's love and embrace the beauty of our history and our town. And I want to thank everybody who's come out to support this tonight. We have a lot of people watching from home as well who are in support of this, and I also want to thank council for your consideration and any support you can give.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Before we move on, I'd like to have Mr. Whit maybe give a few words about the Dollar General situation.
Yes, so certainly, we appreciate all the public comment, and that's very helpful for the city to take the temperature of what the community is with respect to any development. So as you may know, the city does have ordinances in place, so any development that comes in does have to comply with those ordinances, and so I can tell you that much of this is new, and we don't have a whole lot of information yet about the actual specifics, but as that information comes in, we'll be closely looking at those ordinances to make sure that there is compliance or that it doesn't comply, and therefore, it wouldn't be appropriate to grant certain approvals. In addition, you know, one of the issues that we'll be looking at is zoning, and if any variances are required or special exceptions would be required for any, any specific aspects of the proposed development once we get those finalized plans. Certainly, if there's a zoning issue and a variance or a special exception would be required, that would require going to the zoning hearing board, at which case, I would encourage everybody to attend that meeting as well, to let the zoning hearing board know, you know, what your thoughts are of the project as well. But I, I do want to reiterate, like I said, we're getting bits and pieces, we don't know have, have all the answers, know all the information, but we will be looking closely and monitoring that to see what that project entails, how that could affect the community as a whole, but specifically that area, and ensuring that there's compliance with any city ordinances that are in, in place, so just wanted to offer those comments.
Thank you so much, Tim.
I do have a question for Mr. Over. What is that parcel listed as, zoning-wise?
As the gentleman from North Emerson, it is a commercially zoned property, it's a C1 zone. It has been a C1 zone. There has been other action by the planning commission and the city council back in 2016 that actually extended that C1 zone to allow the chiropractor to build his office on the corner of there.
Thank you.
I have a question. Why did nobody in your firm know this? They sent me a copy of the zoning map that they used, and he specifically said, since there are two double lines, there was no zoning law in that property, and I will say that. He said, but there are two double lines that separate Ben Franklin, blue lines, from the rest of the Morgantown Street. Ben Franklin is institutional.
That's correct.
Everything above is zoned residential law.
That's incorrect.
Why is that not, is not on the Fayette County website? It is nowhere to be found.
The Fayette, the, the Fayette County Tax Assessment website has nothing to do with the zoning classifications.
But what, but what was this done? Because I'm up there, and since I'm within 100 feet, I should have been notified that that zoning was going to change.
The zoning for this specific piece of property was, was established in 2002 when the current regulations were adopted.
And you will provide documentation of that?
Yeah, I, I mean, the regulation-
And you also have to EAMPC books as a part?
100%. I don't have all the information relative to the process up to that date, but I have the zoning ordinance that was adopted in 2002. I have the zoning map that was adopted in 2002, and I have the land development ordinance that was adopted in 2002.
But you do need that other information, too. You need to have the Pennsylvania municipal codes.
I have the, I have the MPC.
But you have to follow all, you have to prove that you followed all of that, that somebody, there's got to be record of someone, maybe it's not, Joe.
It's not. It's in this building, so, I mean, I, I would be very surprised if the, the previous administrations did not follow the rules or regulations of the MPC in the state to adopt the zoning ordinances that they adopted in 2002. Now, granted, if you read the MPC, which it sounds like you have, that MPC also recommends that each governing body revisit those comprehensive plans and ordinances every 10 years. So we're 2022 now, it's 20 years, and that's the need for a new comprehensive stand, plan right now in the city of Union Town, so.
Well, Mr. Cuppen, as Whit there, back, he was there in 2002.
And as he indicated in his statement, he knows that it's commercial property.
Well?
I was called by John Fleury, and it was business.
That's correct.
That's commercial.
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Is it professional?
In, in, in my world of zoning, business professional is different. That's on the other side of Morgantown Street. But if somebody says business or commercial, it's kind of interchangeable in zoning.
Can I address one question, John?
Sure.
Now, with that flooding problem, of course, that was going down to Union Street. I talked to the street department manager-
John Paul Linsky, yes.
Yeah, and he was going to go from a 15-inch line to a 20-inch line. Now, I'm no engineer, but I can tell you, what from 15 to 20 is not going to resolve any problem going down to Union Street. And that at 50% of the runoff would come from that business going down to North Emerson?
Yeah. So I'll, yeah. So I'll, I'll work with Mr. Paul Linsky to make sure we right-size the pipe, okay, to make sure we have big enough pipe that goes in the ground. Just to make sure you understand, any development in the city of Union Town actually has to decrease the amount of store water that runs off the site by 55%, so, no, by 40, by 45% because they have, they're only allowed to release 55% of pre-development rate, so.
They don't, they don't come down North Emerson for flooding?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to ask a question. If somebody wants to find out the zoning of a property, how would they go about that?
They can, they can, well, they, they can call the office here, or they can call my office and request a copy of the map. We have copies of the maps, so.
So my mother did that. She called your office, she spoke to Josh-
Yep.
And he told her that that property is zoned residential in 2002, so. I have done this well. On the courthouse website, it says that property is zoned R3.
The courthouse website has nothing to do with the city zoning, okay?
It translates to another website. The city general, none of the websites are updated. The city council website is not updated, it doesn't list the front numbers. Planning committees are not updated, zoning committee is not updated, nothing is updated. So how are residents supposed to find out where they go for information if nothing's ever updated?
If you were to provide a copy of the map in my office, it has C1.
We'll, we'll take a look at that and get that updated for you. Something was brought to my attention last night, and when we started it updated, but I, I will look into that, okay? That's all I, that's all I have this evening. Ms. Marshall?
Being resolved by the city council, the city of Union Town, the council adjourned to meet Thursday, March 3rd, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Schuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.[1750.88]